What's our first meeting?
Well, hey, we're having a work session. Crystal needs to go first because we're under tornado watch.
Okay, come on, let's just go through that and then we'll give her ten fifteen minutes, huh?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you all for letting me get first. We, Clay County is under tornado warning in northern place, so we're going to be sure we're on top of things. So I came this afternoon to tell you guys that I've got a packet and I'll make a copy when I run back to the back and actually bring it back for each of you. The pay study, during the pay study, we had two positions that were added. They were called Communication Officer Shift Supervising Positions. So those were approved in the pay study. And I spoke with Emily Brown this morning to verify that we have the, is it Conroy or Rad? Conroy?
Conroy.
Okay, yes. Their paperwork is here, I've got it attached, just kind of verifying that our position's what we have available. So, in the new budget, we have not added those yet, and she said it's much like what Lee had just done with PSC, just kind of rearranged his organizational chart. So I'm coming and hoping that you guys will allow me to rearrange my org chart and add, there was two in the pay study that were added, the shift supervisors. At this point, we only want to do one. Right now, our Communication Officers sit at a pay grade twelve, and the new position is at a thirteen. And the pay difference on the twelve and thirteen is sixty-seven cents. So we're looking at approximately twenty-eight hundred, sorry, thirteen hundred per year. So, you know, in our department, we kind of fluctuate with temporary employees, so our budget can handle that, because we don't have all of our temp slots covered. So, that's just what I'm kind of simply asking. She said she wanted to set it up and handle it just like she did Lee's, how we just did that. And she said that that's how she would structure it and run it, and that it had to be approved for you all first, but it is in the pay study, it was approved.
Y'all agree with that, do you?
I mean, we can, but I got questions. Are you gonna be able to paper out of your budget?
Yeah, like I said, our budget's a little, you know, it fluctuates because we don't have all our positions full, so we budgeted, of course, for the positions that we have.
So you're gonna take away some of the positions, just like what we did?
Right, exactly. We will take away one of the full-time positions to add this full-time position, so.
Okay, you only got two big ones in that, so why don't you move it?
So, actually, I asked Emily about renaming it. I want to do a Training Officer, and I want their responsibilities to be, A, to work during weather, hazardous, whatever type of events we're having, but their primary function is for us to be our Training Officer, so that when a new person comes in, they will have the responsibility of full training just for the one person. Right now, it's kind of all over the board with our trainers. And they will still work a shift like everybody else, and there's no difference in them, except where they will be over in responsible for the training of the employees.
Is this something you would say you want to do?
Well, no. Our new, our new hires are trained by our current employees, and so, training for us is very rigorous and takes a very, very long time. And so, quite frankly, the employees are, you know, want to be compensated for it. And we tried to think of a way, you know, when we were doing the pay study, we tried to think of a way to give them some type of, you know...
Incentive.
Incentive to hold out the train. So we feel like this one, this could be a perfect opportunity. Like I said, it's sixty-seven cents more, but it gives them a title and it gives them the sole responsibility. And so, I feel like when you, when you have something provided to you like that, and you get a title, you get compensation, you will get a better job. Not that they don't get a better job, but that's our angle.
Can you answer questions? Okay.
Do you have a job chart, I mean, for all your employees?
I do. So I've got org chart for you, and we also have a job description. So, back several years ago, we had Senior Communication Officers. This is the same job description we're using for them, that's what we used them for four, five years ago. So I did include that. Emily has looked at it, we just changed the title, and with the addition of Training the employees, I did add that, and I did add the pay study information as well. So I'll make a copy of it and I'll note it.
So, the resolution you're asking to be added would be to change your org chart?
Correct.
And add one employee to it?
Increase pay for two employees.
One. We have two positions that were approved in the pay study, but we just want one. We don't need two.
So you're not doing away with one employee and increase pay for one employee?
Correct.
You're gonna deal with one position, not one employee?
We're gonna take the positions that we have. We have eight full-time positions, eight full-time Communication Officer positions. We'll have seven full-time Communication Officers and one of the Shift Supervisors, what it's called. And I can change that name, I don't really like that name anyways, but that's just what the pay study said, when it was a Shift Supervisor.
So basically, we just changed the name of one employee?
Exactly. So we're not adding any employees, we're just adjusting the org chart, per se?
One resolution due to deal? Sure. Just a bit for now, one board?
Yes.
Let me ask you a quick question about something else.
Okay.
We didn't ask the building deal last time, because you know that. And it brought up whether or not we could use nine-one-one money for that, or EMA. And, not, EMA not being able to use it if it's nine-one-one, if it's nine-one-one, EMA can't use it. Did you ever try to give a gesture or a prayer petition on that?
I didn't hear directly about that, but nine-one-one funds can only be expended on certain items, and it's not an item one function, so we would have to come from EMA. They're very, they know even what you can spend, and also, our reserve that we have, we're about to have to do, they're rated, which is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and we're new to the mid-people. So, if, it would be your option in consideration to use nine-one-one, I would say, I should just don't do that, I can call off, and I don't want to push our...
Do you have that money in EMA's book?
No, it wasn't in our budget at all this year, so. It was last year, but not this year.
So right now, we're just looking at, add this resolution.
Right.
Everybody can see it's in the paper bag?
If it's gonna be nine-one-one, probably not, it's only a resolution.
Okay. This, this needs to be in the nine-one-one?
Yes, this is, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So would you say that to change the, your on that, right? In that sense, you're the administrator in that sense?
I don't really, I don't do resolutions, I mean, I can if that's...
Well, you have.
Okay.
How can we use the one that I used for Lee's?
Okay.
To change the...
Did you make that, too?
Oh, you'll make sure the next one, your, your... They make it.
Yeah, that'll be, that sounds good.
But in that, when we have that nine-one-one, in that sense, you're the administrator for that nine-one-one situation? Right?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was thinking.
I guess I never thought of it like that.
Yeah, I mean, you're the coordinator there. You, you don't have a vote, but you can, you think that's all we need, right?
Yes.
Okay. So between you and Eric, so...
Right.
Any questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Let us get both away.
All right.
Hey, I do still have something to say, though. And I know probably more department heads are gonna come and try to do this, but we already had a million dollars to look at coming budget on salaries. So, at some point, we're gonna have to relook hard at some figures. I mean, I know what she's talking about, it's not that much money, but...
It's not a change in budget from that, as far as our, our payment. That's what we need to watch out for, is that they have to change it. Does it increase enough if we're gonna pay up?
I didn't know we had any funded positions back there, weren't they? Did they?
Temporary positions. So it's not funded for the whole year.
See, it's hard to keep, there's always fluctuating in and out.
And once they get certified, they head down the road for sixteen dollars a mile. So, we train them, they get somewhere else to work, and we're off to do it.
Matt had called me earlier today and asked if he'd be coming to the work session or commission meeting, and I know this is not really, normally our policy, and I made mistakes, but I told him to come to either one, but I really should have sent him up for regular meeting, but he's here, y'all, y'all can hear him. Go ahead, Matt.
Well, thank you.
Judge Chorale.
Yeah, Judge Chorale, we're, we're here, though.
Say, thank you.
Good morning, y'all, good. Clay County, we appreciate it. Clay is first one of these, I don't think, so we're never leaving him, Clay County, but Clay County, and we, we're in the world, and we're continuing to grow, we're probably a positive team, and making the best possible, but I like what you're doing. But, Lee and I, we're complete alike, and we're gonna talk about the bridge out there. We know everybody's concerned about it, we're gonna make sure the Commission males aren't basing on it, and how that, that Lee take over there, and there's, there's four other, twenty of us, completely, have homes, and then there's three others that have a ladder, too, saying, you know, we really need to keep the bridge open, more, more bridges. It's a lot of good for so many, and at other times, if it takes, get around another way, it's gonna be a big problem.
I know y'all probably hear that part in the law, and it's, before we cut, close the bridge, and then we cut here, I had to replace it. And, so, two-fold itself, it's showing my part, I guess, we would really like to keep that bridge open, because it's the most convenient. I think it probably would be, in the long run, the most efficient and most safe access, even though maybe the most expensive of solutions is to rebuild that bridge. And, there are twenty people, and it's easy to say, well, that's twenty people, I mean, live here, but there's, they really live, there's four, five, I've got a letter here, sorry, it's not perfectly written, because I no longer have a secretary, but there's five obviously living in there, and there's about another four or five that are actually retiring, probably, and will be living out there outside. And that, so that's why we decided to come and tell you what we were thinking. So our corporation is willing to put up a hundred thousand dollars towards bridge construction, that bridge. I probably have had some type of association, we talked to him a little bit, and I said we should build a bridge, and to Mr. Estes, make kind of form a bond. And one of our members now is being in construction, and he would like the opportunity to meet Mr. Estes, and bring his crew, and build a real fashion, because that's where he goes, to live, of the bridge, and the other route, probably just right through Mr. Davis's land, that may not work out, I don't know. So, I couldn't, we just, I wanted to make y'all aware of what's going on, is what we were asking to do, I don't wanna be laying a bill behind anybody's back, or anything like that. This one, like, we would love to have our team to present what is not college, what they're not college. Now, as far as other things, where to fund those, where it comes from, I don't think that I'm speaking without all that, I don't know that, I would... So, I just, we just want, that's what we want to say, all these folks, act, they, when they live, it's just like this question, some living, it's, I don't know what this meant, a lot of this, there's a lot of split. So, this is the other folks that live out there, like, never decided. And inside, well, there are three people that live, they live in a long town, they're the same, your sister, and your sister, I've forgotten her name, they live out there at the bridge as well. And they're, for them, being the elderly, even more so than me, probably more credible, ready, strong, and able to handle this, and what have. So, this is...
Well, we have made, and talked about the bridge several times, and one of the things of this, the funding that the Commission, it's really not, it's federal money that is being put into another project, where we take local funding, put in whichever bridge we're working on, so the only amount that would be put into, I think it's four-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, seventy-four thousand, something like that, the ARCA money that's going for a cover, and then we're gonna relocate the money, so that's, and so when you, when you're looking at that money and the funding that's gonna be coming into it, it could become a money issue, which is the first bridge that I looked at whenever it come up, and I think Lee had called me about they were gonna close that bridge last year, going out, when they were late. So that's what I was hoping, and trying to get that bridge done, but in the same essence, whichever bridge is repaired or done, that road is critical, because the county don't have another meaning in the high to work, you know, than the other. I mean, so I'll just try and negotiate a deal that I can get one bridge done and keep it open, because sooner or later, both bridges is gonna go, I mean, sooner or later, the one going to your property is the number one that goes out. I think they're coming to inspect it again this year, last year, they just, they just give us a, a rating, and so what we're just trying to do is put something in a package, or have a package together on something that we might keep the bridge up a little bit longer while we redo one bridge or the other. And then when it come into the funding of the bridge, with Lee, you know, he's our engineer, so we have to follow his, but you know, as far as the, once it goes to the other road, and everything gets done on the other side of the bridge, that there's a Mr. Hill's district, I just go enforce this, from Mr. Hill, to try to have that done. So, we've had all the money that is to be put up by the private sectors on the other bridge, too.
Well, and he also, Floyd, put a hundred thousand toward this bridge, when we first met, that was what we wanted to do. You know, so we proposed that, and we're not opposed to putting more funding out there, but we're just interested in having the bridge, we can get our property out there in time and manner like we do now. Another twenty minutes on the road, if you can't pass, Lee and I went out there the day we couldn't get around. Like, those trees down, and road was so bad, you know, and I can't fathom the cost of keeping that road up, much less building, would be something the counties and businesses gonna have to take over. Plus, keep the other road up, that we've already got, coming in the back there.
And I think that, I think what, what some of our reason was, too, was, I mean, this was in Rogers District, was, is if the other bridge goes out, we need that joint venture, because anywhere it goes, if, say, both bridges goes out, the only alternative is go back, I think, you know, and right now, that road's probably tore on pieces, because they're logging over right now, going out the other way.
It's not better than the one, the one, you know, coming through the Dan White Bridge.
Yeah.
Well, it's anyway, I guess what I liked is, Doc's commission, I would have had this work, let Lee talk, Lance Taylor, that I'm talking about, and I don't wanna tell my liberation, he's the owner out there, it's worth, and he was just saying, I would give him a chance to lead, with his gear and looking for, and then, he commissioned a lot of better works. My boys, my crew, have looked at, and bring this guy, that owns that, done the bridge, and this better work a lot better, let him look at it, he might look at it, I don't know.
Yeah, this is just...
And like, that's not something, we're trying to do, nothing else, we just, he was saying, he could be, he's something other way, you know, that's, that was my purpose. I'm not asking for a resolution, saying, yeah, we're gonna be able to put them like bridges. I don't mean that, that's not appropriate, but I didn't know what y'all, like, we like that.
But a lot of bridges gave you a ballpark figure?
Well, and that's what I said here, thinking, no, we're not, we're just...
I mean, anything we come up with, we gotta beat it out.
Well, it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this... And I'm saying, if you're, if you're just trying to come up with a ballpark figure.
Yeah. This is just me thinking, if, so when it comes to bridge replacements, the White Bridge is definitely gonna be a cheaper, easier replacement, bottom line. We can replace that one a lot cheaper than we could eight-four. But if, if Lance and them's willing to help out, they may could be some type of rehab, when you stab a three-tone bridge, but the deck's an issue, some of the floor beams are an issue.
About the foot?
Ribs and the hose. The footings are really, took to rehab it, I wouldn't worry about them near as much as trying to replace a bridge and plating it. So, if the final outcome is still a three-tone bridge that's been rehabbed, it's, you know, total lifespan out on, but you get twenty-five more years out of it, or something.
Well, then, how much can I do?
I'd be fine, I'll, I guess, but I...
And, and nothing right now is, other than doing engineer work on the bridges, you know, to find out if the, if the paint walls are gonna hold up or not, so.
He, he said, he, he looked at it, walked through, and said, I'd like to give my guys, we've done lots and lots of road work, drainage work, give me a estimate, go down, throw what Mr. Davis's proposed, see what that new road costs, and then what those bridges and coal and damn whites, you know, all those figures, and plus the versus the present, every bridge, revamp the nets. So, it may not even make the come here, I just thought we should come, thinking what I was...
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't want...
First thing that caught my attention was the cost, you know?
Oh, yeah.
We can do one for one-third of what the other.
I really thought it was a bit cheaper to do the, the in-force, when I first looked at it, you know, because it didn't seem like the next order dishes, but with that extra support, is where it breaks down.
The, the score down in the business, that's the problem, plus the state tree, that's, that's another big problem, that I gotta have cranes that can go down the river, so that's a, it's another issue, too.
Well, that's why we want to come to the party, all the team, and I'll get the team...
So I'm just considering, it's not where I can go, I'm giving Lance my number, I don't know, I don't know, you know, kind of thing, it's based on what I've already been looking at, I don't...
Okay. I mean, you're just looking and trying to come up with a ballpark figure, it says, when we get rid, spend money, gotta be there.
That would be...
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is what we're trying to hit, though.
What's up here, done these ballpark figures, and then we have to figure out how to come up with three-hundred thousand dollars to get it out.
Would you know if that tree out there is protected?
I don't know that, I'm sorry. It's, it used to be the largest one, it swung up, you know, so Mary found that a long, long time ago, I think another one's surpassed it, but now I think it might be back to number one, but it's hard truly projected, I do not know, so it is, it is not true to protect the, it's not, it's, it's, it's a long study, even though he has, you wanna just...
Well, they said, they had said that tree behind the...
The church, yeah.
Was, was, yeah, some kind of special tree, and by the night, they're just wanting to get, and just, actually, to get...
There's no official protection, right? Just...
So, it blows up, or it blows up?
I mean, that would happen one day, and I hate that I watched it, ever since I was really, really little, I've seen that drift.
I know, that's why you planted that tree.
Yeah, yeah.
You shouldn't have done that, Steve.
I'm not hardly that old yet.
I don't know, I'm not engineer, I don't know how you could build a new bridge at that size without the Danes in that tree.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, there may be a rehab option, I don't think a new bridge at that size is an option. But we have...
That would be the best, you know, put the rehab out.
As long as you haven't been stabbed, and...
Wait, then?
I don't remember, but as long as you haven't spent two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and stabbed a three-tone bridge.
Well, that's what we got now.
Yeah, that's what you got now, that's what I'm saying, you're gonna throw a lot of money in, you still don't have what you got.
Okay, so, we spent three-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred thousand to have a three-tone bridge there, uh, they gone up?
We got a hundred thousand months.
Right.
And Floyd said he'd give a hundred, unless something's changed.
Well, Floyd, Floyd said he'd bridge, he still willing to put a hundred thousand for that bridge, whichever, but he has offered more money on the other bridge. But he said, even if we do the other bridge, he said he still would give this hundred thousand back, so that's where we're at, I mean, I, they want apples for that bridge, I, I didn't look at the other bridges, they've got to be about numbers, and now I'm willing to be able to tie both bridges together, if I can get twenty-five years, which I don't want to say I just worked out my mind, I don't want to work out later on, but, 'cause that bridge might not wait for rain, or that might be there some more. But, and, I still, yeah, but, him just looking at, basically, you got somebody, they got somebody out there that wants to just wait on, because, like, some of the stuff that's looking at getting done on the other bridge, the removal of the bridge, and stuff like that, Larry's looking at...
Removing?
Removing the painting, it's all sitting on the ground, because they don't have to go through some kind of process, because it's empty. But there's things that's going on, and I, you know, Larry, he, he would be able to have on, which are, I can't speak for him, I just have to ask him, if he said that one off, but we don't have to say that one off.
I don't say any names, I'm just...
You're just talking about that bridge?
Talking about the decks, veins, and that's supposed to...
What we need to talk about, what's...
Well, that's a site like, it seems, about five years, we can't reach it, so...
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, a little, and more than that process.
So we're gonna look at six, ten, say?
Okay, so we'll be able to process, we'll be, that's...
Oh.
I think some things is...
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna go back close, so...
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy New Year.
I'd be glad to see that we didn't have to talk.
Y'all don't want to hand it out, you put it in the year, you deserve a second one.
I'll talk about that, but thank you. Oh, just kinda bringing you up, Crystal did come in and she's asking for a resolution on organizational chart, and not moving, you know, the commission, that's here, decided to put it on the agenda, but it's just, just to change one employee, I mean, on the chart, to raise him to a train, is that what she said?
Yeah.
Situation, and she has the money in her budget to handle that, because they have so much movement.
So, even though it's on the agenda, I mean, we'll, we'll probably discuss it again, somebody might sign on, because a full-time trainer, or a full-time, I mean, we've got a lot of hours, so, like, right now, and it's like, I'm just gonna be, full-time trainer, or also, somebody said, our answer college, too.
I'm just saying, we'll live for time to train, that much, too.
But what I'm saying is, what's the person gonna do when they're not training?
You're not at them.
We're just, we're just saying, pretty soon, somebody...
You're gonna take one of those ladies back there and...
The Saxon college?
Renamed or get a receipt to send her away.
To get, in Saxon college, or next one.
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chorale, Mr. Miles came to talk about the bridge on eighty-four, is that not eighty-four?
Yeah.
James, pretty sure, yes, sir. How much money do we have, or do y'all have, or, how about the do, these two?
Well, let me tell you what I have, what I have is, the money that, from the ARCA money that we're gonna use, we want to swish the money. And then, then I got a resolution here for three-hundred thousand on the other bridge, that Floyd Davis is gonna write a check for three-hundred thousand dollars. He also said that he would honor his hundred thousand if we decided to do anything to the other bridge, but I think what his words were, concrete, that would probably...
He wants to do it.
He don't want something that's, you know, he don't want a pass job, he wants something for, anything for a road bridge, and he might still honor the hundred thousand up there, and they gonna, and they coming up with a hundred, they said they might come up with a little bit more. So, if, if he can, if he can rework the bridge at, say, three-hundred thousand...
I mean, coming up with an estimate of what it's gonna cost for each bridge, when you come up with that estimate, then we need to know, I mean, how much money we got, so quickly, like, you know? quickly, like, you know, that's something you gotta do right now.
Yeah, and then, I was giving you the numbers that I know that's gonna go towards...
But you think it's gonna be that money to rebuild one and completely build another one, or you just wanna pick one?
We're, we're more concerned about replacing one bridge.
But the, the, the story of it is, it's two, two miles of road, and, and I tell you, I've been there, a lot of dirt roads in the county, and that road going on through there, other than being widened a little bit, until it gets to the other end, or two pipes has gotta be added, and it'll just, an incline that can get some work, the thing about it is, Larry, it's not a road now, but between the two bridges from going over, uh, Cross Mountain and A and Four, and the way he was gonna return, and, but, but what he was gonna, is what they were gonna do, Larry and, and Mr. Fo, but Mr. Davis is gonna do that, and then they're gonna say, here it is.
Then the county, then we have to take possession of...
Take possession of the road.
...guidelines, and that's...
Well, they're gonna hand it to us with the guidelines, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's written, I mean, there's a guideline written.
Yeah, so, so that'll give them a road, that, that will title us, and the only reason I was worried about that was for the very reason, if, uh, if one bridge or the other went out, we didn't do nothing to either bridge, we would always have access to those two places to have a place to get out, well, that had to go all the way back to the trace of road, go down to the trace, that's where that road comes in, and that, and how far is it back to that road?
It's probably four miles.
Four miles, it's two point two miles to, from that point to that bridge, to the other bridge, so, if it takes thirty minutes to drive two miles, and, and, and I've been through there in my pickup truck, and it rained, and it went all the way through, so, I mean, yeah, there was one time that a tree went across the road, we got trees going across every road in the county, but, uh, but...
And our terming says that we can, we will accept the funding.
Yeah, I've got, I've got the funding, I got the resolution for it to hand over tonight, but, you know, if you wanna wait, you wanna wait until you meet with them, and determine what we're gonna do, but this money right here has nothing to do with the management.
That's what I'm saying, I know that.
We can move forward with this.
That's what I was gonna say, I saw you move forward with one, if, if we do rehab the other side of the bridge.
Yeah, the other bridge might be the other question, you know, because our bridge still awards, like, the effect of funds, we're not finishing that one.
Yeah. You give a list of ones that you can... But I think we need, I think we do need to look forward to this, this money that we put into an account to go forward to funding this bridge that's in question, and, uh, and if we don't go forward with this, it just gets checked through the bank, and it's for those. What was that?
So is this a resolution or a plan?
Yeah, I'm gonna add this to, uh, to, to paying this money while the money's being handed to the county commission.
I want y'all all to look at that, I know we kind of got out of order tonight, just so, if y'all are okay with that, since we're talking on that subject, whereas the county commission has identified the bridge, eight sixty-three county road is in need repair there's the funds currently available in county in our insufficient prayer, players of residents, residents whose direct affected by uses of safe rest have agreed to donate three hundred thousand to a repair of such bridge where its commission pays to accept these funds definitely serve a public purpose, so long as the project is speaking before, according to the county, insisting it serve well for everybody in town, therefore, we resolve that the county commission will accept the seventy million thousand donation to a specific few art projects funds, the project and Rex County's here as a project to count current project is with appropriate higher, higher citation to ensure that the safe project neither interferes with nervous places e ongoing project, y'all okay to end that? Okay, but, do you not need the person's name, 'cause I'm sure they're gonna get a copy of that.
Yeah, we're gonna add that.
They're gonna need a copy of that for their taxes.
Yeah.
I don't feel that, man. See, we would add a name.
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta get this out here.
This was written by the county attorney.
Yeah.
Jason wrote that?
Yeah, I did.
Why am I getting out of name, 'cause who, who, who can write the name, 'cause you know it's gonna write off your taxes, he's not gonna have a copy of this.
Well, you, you can do, you can do it quietly, and it can still write off your taxes.
I really don't think it's concerning about taxes.
That really doesn't count.
Yeah, do you?
No.
Well, you don't have to, you know? Okay, well, that's where I end up, consent agenda, or any business, anybody give a consent agenda?
Consent, and I'm, I'll, I'll mention to, uh, I'll mention to, and I put this name on there, 'cause I did mention that too at the front end, and so, so I give, uh, Jason the information of Floyd Davis's phone number and everything, and that's what I got back, but, but what I'm getting at again, just to make sure, I don't know if he...
It's good, it's good, I guess.
'Cause he, 'cause also, we don't know who to write this back to, so I'm not gonna do this bridge.
I'm gonna call this the three hundred K resolution, for right now, so we'll understand what we're talking, consent. All right, um... Do you have...
One, three, no, five.
Get so, you want, huh?
I think it's really...
You wanna wait, you okay to say that?
Yeah.
You didn't know hurry, okay.
But this bridge, that bridge here is going, I think, back in the office with the county board, and that's what I do.
All right, I was just attempting to try to get your name, please, Miss Cope, have you agreed?
I haven't agreed on this time.
You have nothing? Anybody have a question for, for Miss Cope?
Uh, Liz, um, I mean, any purchase, um, going through, when they called in to get a purchase order, all those purchase orders going to the right account, because I notice a lot of these account in one month, or zero now, which I know some of it that I stepped up in large quarters, but then some of it, like, my, um, fee requirements, now, that, they're already popping it out in one month's time.
I know that some things that they did buy, they wanted to be something at a time, I know the sheriff's department was small, didn't have the sets of tires, so I know they bought you the certain items at a certain time.
Would that go into client tests?
No, it would be a maintenance, so it would be the sheriff's department's budget, but it'd be in their, their auto chair, loans.
Okay, so, when they call, so each one of those would be in key dollars sort of account?
Yes, to a G O code.
The other one?
Yes.
So, that's, that why, and it's not just there, it's our engineers' performance also like that, I notice, so, that, well, they, I mean, how are they gonna keep up with the rest of the lineups, but we do.
And I guess, I guess that's a department by department basis, some do buy their quantity that they're gonna need in a year, you know, just like, just like anybody, you have certain expenses that occur at a certain time of year, and you may not have the need until that same time next year, that is, that is the case, or something, so, there's a little... I think exactly, it's not that, I'm, I'm gonna be on one.
I got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to the agent, only AD reports, that's, and I, I'm just gonna send me, uh, the names, but, you know, back to my coach, so, 'cause that's, and most times, that's what I get, and when you get that by the commission, they don't get all the stuff that goes with it, where the purchase orders have been...
The detail.
The detail that comes to it.
The department heads actually get their, their section of the A and E report, they also get an A and E detail report, which, where that month will show every month item, and what GL code you got coded to for the month, and, and that's a good thing, because the purpose will, will sometimes say, oh, I really want for this to go to this, this amount of GL code on this line, on my budget.
So, 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 that's what this one goes, so whenever I call, it's great calls for P O, and in that line item, if he's working on the morgue, I know he's got thirty-five hundred dollars to spend there, so anything that's being charged to that morgue should go to that morgue line item, not to my, to the whole budget, so that's what, that's what, I think that's what we're trying to figure out, is, 'cause, which maybe all the charges is gonna be on this next A and E report, that all, 'cause I come up and got from, uh, Emily, you know, all the receipts that he had, where he had been buying, so trying, and I, 'cause I always watch my budget to see how much money's being spent, but if it's just, does, the, are you coding, or is it in the code, you code when they call for the P O?
I do.
So when the P O comes in, does it have a line item number that money's coming out of, or you just hand out the P O?
Yes, there, I have a, a paper that I go by, and the lunch council other department has it, Melinda, she's really good about knowing which one to put in, and she'll write it on there, now Fred, not so much, I have to try and, you know, which one I guess, not much, that's the best.
So, and, and we had the conversation, if he calls for P O number, and he don't have a line item that's coming out of, guess what?
What?
He don't get a P O number, I mean, well, I, that's no way that I can, I mean, 'cause the county commission sets aside this for special projects, and it's pending that we're using a good bit of the other county commission money that is not designed for building a morgue, so, so, and, and it hurts us, but I'm not, I'm not hurting, so, this summer, we're gonna have to cut grass, and we're having to put out mulch and run, and then go in on the morgue.
One thing about it, though, is, like, for instance, for, you're talking about the morgue, if there are, if there is more money in that line item, other than what you're gonna spend on the morgue, we've got no control over how much specifically, that he's still gonna cut that same line, if you've got five thousand dollars in that line item, I mean, he goes over his thirty-five hundred, he's just gonna go over his thirty-five hundred that you're saying is allocated just to the morgue, um, we don't really have a good way to track that as we go along, it's just that line item's got X amount of money, and that's the cap.
That's okay, but look at, if nobody's come out with thirty-five hundred, then you still got thirty-five hundred, so money's gotta be coming from somewhere, so what I'm telling you is, if he calls up here, and he gets a P O number, you go to that thirty-five hundred, then when I get a copy of it, and it's thirty-seven hundred, I will tell him no more money for the morgue, no work on the morgue, I'll come to the commission and get him the, with, with this saying that there's no cap, we just keep spending money up my concern.
We won't give him a P O if they're, they're on their line item.
But I'm trying to get him to go, I'm trying to get him, 'cause a lot of times our line items runs into a situation that, uh, it just draws from this line item, and then you're out of this, took fourteen thousand dollars, and the morgue is setting at thirty-five hundred, this is set, and there's no money being drawn down, I just want to make sure going forward that we are making sure it's coming out of, and, the sheriff, they, they got, somebody said over there that does that between Lane and Pollard, that they say, we call up here, Melinda does, but I'm just trying to get, make sure I get mine straightened out, that it's coming out of that line, 'cause when it gets to thirty-five, being...
So, like, in the county, I wouldn't service, out of the, um, administration, we're already up in, in, um, saying, right, so, but you, it was allocated ten thousand, and the common was yours, that it was twelve thousand, I don't know.
All of that, let me read that, which is, that's, you know, that's just, I'm going through, in a month, I'll check on that, in a month's time, and, you know, but you're saying they can't, or, but they are, because we knew that, everything is not your P O, um, that may have been...
It could be on all of it, but that's, I mean, lots are, lots are out, you gotta know that all of it, and, and it's gotta be other funds, so, and it just, going through and, and seeing in a month's time, some of them are already being popped out, it was heavily concerned.
On the, uh, A and E reports, uh, when A and E reports come out, what is the set time for that to be handed out, before, I believe in the past, Lane, when was the, most of the time y'all got A and E report each month?
It was usually September, maybe, the month.
So, long to fifteen?
Yeah, we usually got September, about September, June, that's different.
'Cause this closes out as a year, so, I, I was saying, and I'd like to see, let's come up with a problem that A and E reports, which send out, have each month have a certain number, and can we email?
I'm sorry, the utilities are really hard, I was just talking about, um, just one time, then? If you just say it's on your, um, county, or...
There's a discrepancy on some of that last week, that there are... Maybe, maybe to highlight a better, um, little check.
And we, we will lose some money within the, sometimes, like, I get, I get a line item that's maxed out, um...
Would you, would you like to...
No, I don't necessarily, the utilities, I mean, that's really a, a shock, or, we just kind of worry about, actually, if it goes into this next year, then, the county just gotta cover what you gotta cover on that.
It's just weird, I mean, they did, it was kind of stood out there.
But there is some utilities that, that are gonna have to be switched, um, if we need...
When you do that, you need to know that, so we can change it in the next budget, that, that if you've got one item, line item, that you're gonna take something up here, and move down here, and you need, we need to increase that one, and we may need to decrease that one, that you're pulling out of, so you need to like, know that.
At the end of the year, yeah.
And, but, you know, we're looking at them all, a lot, so, and, like I said, we have a county in the wall, and we just gotta leave, so I was going through, some of this is, like, this, we're popping it out in a month's time.
When it comes to that year of date spent, but it's time, you're gonna watch you spend that year for that one.
To take more part, we, uh, and, and then it's like, we're on my budget, and we're like, well, they didn't need that much, I mean, that's parting in that certain area in which you're allocating on that budget, so, you say, well, we're looking at it, uh, trying to keep everything in our financial, y'all just farting from this one to that one to pay.
And, 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 and that's the way it's set up, that, it's always been a way that you can move money, and those been certain line items, I figured I wouldn't agree that you can move money from electrical, or water vehicles, or stuff like that, but in the past, like in my, and, just in that little budget I got, there's like three or four, and used to, it, it, they just take, 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 take out one, and then at the end of the year, you know, and they're like, so what are you gonna change this to, I'm just trying to say, it's gonna be hard for someone that's running as much as he is, or he does fully, and he said, well, I just won't buy...
I'm just using him as an example, that, like, so, I'm, I'm fluid, it's not just he is, he's all, he's everything.
Do you have something, okay, great.
I just think that the department head will take care of it, it's their budget, their money, like, they were saying, he was aware, but he had plans to, to shift the money to take care of.
You know, I, I kind of agree with that, it's ours to, it's ours responsibility to work within, to work within that budget, and as far as I'm concerned, I've got shit to do for this one, or this one, it's, it's my call to make sure that, you know, as long as this goes, whoever will do them, and you don't wanna just, I still haven't said, I don't know, so, I don't know, give it to a little something, say that would be my call to make, um, as long as it don't, in the end, would, hope it was, you know?
I don't see, we need a lot of revisions unless I've got a request from it from the property, and that's what that is.
And there's a little form, there's a form we fill out, so, this would be your add, and this would be the, usually, so...
That's what I wanna get Fred involved in.
But always, and it's never perfect science, but your goal is immensely, and, and within each line item.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I would say, if you're taking something out of one, that means you don't need the money that you put in the budget for that one, but you make more in the one that you're skipping it to, that's just something to keep up with, and, and make our budgets in the process, a lot needs to grow out somewhere.
If you know you, you run into this, and you do it every year, and you're not facing a problem.
Well, the, you know, things change, and they fluctuate, believe it in my office, you know, there's, and there was a time, I needed two copy machines, but I don't, you know, one copy machine because of the demand, we have printers and several copy machines, we only need one copy machine, but things change, but your goal is to try to perfect this as much as you can.
And so, I know, and some of these, you know, the repairs, and some of the items, some of that is a year of being, I don't know, it's, it's always, some of those, it's a little bit...
And another thing inflation costs, you know, everything costs.
Right, that's what I was saying, you do this, you do...
Right, that's what I was saying, you do this, you do this this year's.
Yeah, the state is out of power for increasing rates this month, so we'll take that.
But on the ledger, the ledger for that one.
We did like asking, we did like asking answers. All right, any other questions for Mr. Coker? Yes, sir. I know your retirement dragging this up, but we have an M.O.U. for the sheriff department too. We already know we're getting written up last year, and now we're gonna get written up this year. We've been working on this for a year, and we need to do something.
Where is it, where is it following at? Where's following at?
It was big, and so I've had time to do it, I mean, there's, there's so many hours. And I haven't had time to sit down and get it, can't get anybody to give you any kind of guidelines on what we made, because we, we, a contract like we used to have, or is, they, they basically like, like what we sent out for beds and then getting the beds on? I, I really don't know how to even get done with it, but honestly, I haven't had time.
Have you talked to the attorney, he had any guidelines to it?
He, he just basically left it, this is what we did, basically, he didn't work at it if I could work or something, but it's, it's in my hands to.
It's probably just me to, you know, step back and to take care of it.
I have, I mean, I'm not doing it on a Sunday very first time or something, I have, I have no other time, I've been, I work every weekend.
Well, this past year, this, I don't know, I don't know how complicated this is.
Well, I think, I think, that's, that's the way I've always come out of the sixty-seven counties. We have the A.C.C.A., and I have not yet failed, I mean, even when we spent forever on these, uh, S.R.O. officers, I called the levee over our county and, and it took her about four days, but she sent me back messages, sent me letters or anything else ridiculous, girl. And, uh, and, and they got, sort of got the end of, you know, an idea of what other counties are doing. You know, Platte County's been here, and these other counties have been here all these years, so it ain't like we got a reading at the wheel. If you learn to reach out to your friends, uh, other people in other counties, that's where you, the whole idea about going to the A.C.C.A., you got this problem, you need to always, and, and, and reach out to Son, you reach out to Meg, and all these other people, and I don't know if you're tied in with the new system that you got with A.C.C.A. now. If you got a problem, you type it in, you got sixty-seven counties with feedback to work. And even what we're thinking on is the counties that are our size, what are, what are they doing? Because they're buying the same junk cars that we're buying. So they gotta have the same transmission problems that we're having. And, and I would always first, and most time, uh, that's, that's where you get your best feedback and your best ideas is, or with me, I always just start looking at the counties and start calling the counties that are our size, and say, what are y'all doing? This is the problem we're having with our county, our audit. County County's not a good one, but on S.R.O. officers it was, but it's just a job description of that. But the other counties that are our size has got to be having the same ride up because of the sheriff. They got the same day, it's mostly rural counties where they deal with mud roads and they want the SUVs to be able to get up and down these roads. I would be reaching out to these other counties and just get two or three of those, uh, see what play counties do.
And it's not that I don't want to do it, it's just that finding the time to do it is the problem. And it's, it's always the problem, it's finding the time to devote to something like that. And I did devote some time into getting the, the bid package we got, and did that part, which was to take the old package that we had sent out before that had all of our play to do, it was on it, and fine tune it just to the sheriff's department, I did that, got that sent out, plus we'll be getting them. It's just getting back to it, you know, if I, if I do that, then I'm taking away from something else. I'm not working on financials, or I'm not working on winter considerations, or I'm not working on, um, payrolls and AP transfers and end of the month transfers and all the other things that stack up when I put everything aside for that.
So, I can also say you don't have time to do this.
I don't, I have not had time to do this, if you tell me nothing else matters, that nothing else takes a present over this, then, then that's what I'll do, put something on it done.
Okay.
I don't know how to make.
Let's don't, let's don't, let's don't, let's don't take the shit. So what do you need? The sheriff needs a sheet of what he wants to be priced on his, making his part, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, maybe we just need the bid specifications that we sent out, and maybe we can make something out of that. Like I said, it's just been a matter of getting back to it and getting to the product that we need to have as a contract.
She just called me, the A.C.C.A. tickets.
So if there's any order.
Cause like, like Emma said, they probably know county states done it. And she, she'll know which county did it.
Ever out there, ever come up with a caller on campus? And if you, and, and that's one of the things you learn, that at A.C.C.A., when you've got a problem.
I use them, I do use them all the time, it's just.
And here's.
Is, are you open, is, are you open plan with everything that you have, that you can't? Why do you not share some of them for over two months to.
I have.
Like, or reach out to our A.C.C.A., where they can get you that car. If it's more than you can handle, then you've got, you've got two other people here in this office. Sometimes you, you know, you have to reach out to them.
But the easiest way I found out to solve a lot of problems is just call other counties. You might not like what, what they got on that one, call the next county, you know, just to sort of see.
But I didn't ever know which county is familiar with it, that should.
I wasn't sure they were familiar with these junk cars.
Well, and that's what, here's another thing I was gonna throw in there while we're talking about it. I know you were talking about doing the sheriff's department, and, and we opened the shop back up, and we're changing old, and that kind of stuff, but I've been hit this year with pretty good repairs, uh, injectors and turbos. I really, I think, I mean, I still want to continue doing my maintenance, my general maintenance and stuff like that, but I think we're gonna do a contract or something. I don't know that you're just better off to go back to countywide or major repair for sure.
Well, that's the whole thing.
I know, that's what I'm getting, I, I know that, um, but I'm hoping, I'm gonna end up being pushed out to these thousands this year itself, with, with major repairs with that deal, I could do with the rest.
But she, she just put it out last call, and nobody responded.
Nobody responded, but all she put out was just the sheriff's department, so if you had mine back in there, then you got to be good.
I understand that, but what, she think they're gonna bid on it just like that?
They wouldn't, but you still gotta do the processing.
Well, I talked to several, I talked to several, uh, not just, you know, because if you can't get it done here, you gotta get it done somewhere. Neither of the transmissions we've had, had done and cleared up now, has been the same makeup. And the guy gives us unlimited mileage, I mean, you can't, you know, what, what we're trying to do in this whole process is keep it, but, but as far as getting right up there every year about our budget, then you gotta expand that, that thirty mile, say a thirty mile, and then the sheriff's department drive down to a diggle, drive through, and get this oil changed and drive the car back, or get the tires changed.
I think all, I think all we need is an M.O.U. with one of the local shops that wants to fool with it. And then everything thumps through them, and I think that's what Jason tells us, and then if it needs a transmission, then.
That's what.
You know, they'll take it down there, and then they'll add ten percent to it, and it still all goes through that, but I think it's just an M.O.U. is all we need.
Well, A.C.C.A. didn't agree that we could do that for the sheriff's department, because they realized the, the impossibility of taking their vehicles thirty, forty, fifty miles away to get them repaired.
Let's just get.
But I don't know about the rest of the county, they look at it like it was an emergency situation, the sheriff's department vehicles have them somewhere close by repaired, but I don't know, they would do that with the rest of the fleet.
Why don't you just, why don't you do this in pass, Jason, with coming up with us an M.O.U. or sheriff's department, and get that part taken care of, and if we want to do something else, we can do that on down the line, you know? This is gonna be two years in a row we're gonna be written up. And the past six years before that, since I've been, which I had nothing to do with it, we ended up written up for nothing. And now in two years, we're gonna be written up for the same thing, so it sort of makes us look stupid if we can't solve one little problem. You on a resolution, you into tasking? You know, you. I mean, that's all we need, isn't it?
And I mean, I, I, it's the only thing I haven't done anything with this, you know, I've been hauling a bit of work, I did all the writing up the specs and all that, and get those, well, I took the ones that we had and revamped them for the sheriff's department. Then went through this whole deal with A.C.C.A. about what we could do if we did not hit the bids, and they said that in the sheriff's department, we could do a contract, we just need to get contract services. And they agreed, the sheriff's department, because of the situation that is, they have their repairs done timely, or, you know, keep their cars in the road. But the rest of it, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if we need to, Jason need to do it. I, like I said, I could put something aside and get to it, but if something else won't get done, it's just, well, respect.
Why don't you not task her?
I didn't, all the time. I mean, I'm meeting last week and I'll try to help her out.
It's just a question, then, go on, continue what you're doing and task her for.
I'll tell you what, I'll volunteer to contact Meg with A.C.C.A., and see what we need to come up with here. And if there's something she can just send me from another county, I'll just have her email it to me, and I'll bring it next week, how about that?
Mr. Peters, I'll see you, the, what the bid package that we sent, the specifications that were written up for the bid package from that, and that way, it may be something that she can work with with that.
But if we didn't get any response to the bid package, the bid package is gonna make it bad. We just need an M.O.U. with somebody that's, that's willing to head up all these repairs outside of the camp.
All I'm saying is that it actually lays out what we expect from, where it's given contract, so.
Just, shoot me what you got.
Okay. I appreciate any help you can give, it's not that I don't pass on jobs I do all the time, but, you know, my, with our office, we're all kind of working partners, we're all burying you and our dogs, we're all learning as we go in a lot of cases. And I pass off everything that I can that, you know, that I can get my hands off, but I, I pass away.
You know, we.
All right.
I know, I wanna do that.
Going, going back, so right, that's right, I don't wanna do any M.O.U. task, but he is.
Yeah, turn it off.
See if I can.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Coker?
I don't know that this is really a minisurfer, but, uh, the letters on the sheriff's pay deal is still sitting right in there.
That she can't have gone exactly.
Oh, is she?
Yes, she's been here.
They're still sitting there this morning, I, I just wanted to communicate the mail, but she's already picked it up. I guess it's not a issue.
Okay. Any, any?
Uh, nothing.
Any questions, no?
Like, would you ever get up and check that, um, door bar?
I just.
Something's gotta be there.
I wrote it, and I just, I know you sound something, but, but it's solid, still instructions on it, I don't know, you know, I'm a big, because it's a, it's a lot of stress.
This, this.
You come around and push up this gravel on top of it, and you don't have this gravel on top of it, about minutes, but it is tall. And you're gonna put a net sweep on your gravel, and you get ready to shoot, I know you got a pipe, I'm just telling you.
I mean, it's just sad that, you know, you got that extracted on the, on that road, school track, it's, and, you know, it just really irritates me that this constantly did this to us.
Can you bring it back, it's probably a big situation, it's a big, it's a.
That's what I was thinking, that.
The question, on the, uh, bridge situation, so we're gonna get with, uh, Mr. Taylor, see what all he's planning on investing in that bridge. So I'm gonna get back to Floyd, I just wanna go have a conversation with Floyd and tell him what his type of laws.
I know, I talked to him, I talked to him. Cause it may not even be enough.
Okay.
It's all, it's all right, we may just feel, we may just feel, maybe not as good as I.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, cause Floyd's, I'm, I'm saying it's Floyd, I'm, of course, I'm not saying it's Floyd and people, cause they can talk too. Floyd said, well, take, take a hundred thousand to this, and put it over to that, cause he still agreed to put a hundred thousand into that bridge. Eric put that one, that's two hundred, he said that possibly, that we can rework on that bridge for about two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand. So we got private money at two hundred thousand dollars coming into the county, the county ain't got a dollar and a five. So sure that the commission will come up with whatever's lacking, twenty-two hundred and a hundred, and three hundred, to, to make that happen, if we can make that happen for three hundred. And then I can still hang on to this to get that other, this seven hundred something, I'm gonna put in that bridge to get it, and one way, and three hundred down there.
I'm just, I'm not that good with all that.
Okay.
I, I, I just wanna make sure when I leave here, I got it in my head.
I mean, this right here, you can move forward, um, as far as we have, I don't know, I mean, I thought, I would see, it's, see what he's got, I just wanna make sure. You ain't got a conversation to get.
Okay. Is your big one?
Sort of, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm.
We just limit, we have, we want to put, put four.
Okay, we can't, we can't limit what the state says.
And that's what, so our inspection reports, they have group finds, serious finds, you know, they're all, the findings are all that, so you start finding, you work with it, you make the repairs.
Christopher, huh? Liz, Christopher, yeah?
Yeah, she's.
Hello, I'm, 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 I'm.
John?
What you asked for the other day was like the vehicles with all the mileage and some of the issues, but yeah.
Did y'all buy them in a car? Somebody said y'all bought a green car.
We got a green, we've had it.
A gray one?
Like a charcoal gray, something dark, steel gray or something. We've had it for a while though.
How many vehicles do you have on the road every day?
On the road, be that first column, on the, let's see.
Only four?
No, go on down with the patrol vehicles, down two. Then first four add in vehicle, about me and the investigator, and she did the vehicle. And then the rest on that first sheet, the bottom half, the patrol vehicles. And that back sheet, that's gonna make kind of spares when it ain't fit for much of nothing, other than that fifteen Chevrolet, which we're gonna use this to, I can equal the side to side, or just whatever may be, we have just certain warrant, we can carry all our evidence, or just whatever may be.
Uh, orders.
There, yeah, well, two, one of them have a little motor. But that current mileage, that's currently what we're at, and that shift average, that was based on the December, of course, that was slow on that too, on, of course, kind of the ballpark. And then that yearly estimate, that's got projected worth, what they're giving here, based off of that December one.
So for Tahoe, decked out for a deputy, how, what is that total amount costing us?
Michael, he fixed up, see, his price has gone up too, on his equipment. I wanna say it's gonna be around forty something, but, now, that's if we get off state business. I wanna say it's gonna be half for forty, I believe, forty-eight.
You say forty, if I'm not mistaken. Would you say it did?
Yeah.
And that there is the bars and.
That's everything, stripes, lights, everything.
Uh, how, how many vehicles brought in do you need?
Well, we just hired, uh, another S.R.O. guy, he's actually coming more to those, whatever the secrets.
Where's he from?
Uh, being, being S.R.O. certified, I've got three or four years' experience, so, get it started, I think, for this one.
Well, you might need to straighten, I might have that on this, but I, I don't see the S.R.O. needing, uh, new.
They're not getting, they're not getting down.
If, if you have a vehicle, uh, let's say cheaper than a Tahoe, one, one, what are your choice?
I mean, that's really, I mean, all you got's an Explorer, basically. We talked to a neighboring county, they've had the Durango, and they said they're, yes.
Look at this, they're not getting.
We've had the Explorers before.
What about the pickup?
I won't, but I got them, with the big lot building, as far as.
You think they're too loud or?
Yeah, well, Kevin County, when they first come out with the, the pickups, they had some F-150s and 250s, I think by two years, they only had five hundred two, it was a long road, I reckon.
Long as it's state trooper, you pick up.
Yeah.
That's how it goes with cars.
Yeah, I mean, the only car you can get now is a, is a.
They got cars over there that look like brand new, that take modern transmissions.
Yeah, they're not, it's not applicable for the, just, uh, not when you have more. Yeah, they're not, it's not applicable for the, just, uh, not when you have more than a road in New York.
So, so on the same process, uh, gentlemen, uh, when the S R O replies when the school's shutting down, you gotta work with them and sign it. Because that nine month period, the school pays for that, so.
That's why I'm saying they need a pursuit grade vehicle.
Also, that's where I'm going with this. I, I didn't thought about maybe we just get them something, but at the end of the day.
I mean, they're gonna be back on the road at some point.
Right.
When school's.
And when school's not in it, and when school's out.
No.
I mean, school's out a lot.
Yeah.
So he'll have something for those deputies to do.
All three of them work. All S R Os work when school's out.
Yes. That'd be something for them to do. Except whether it's gonna get a few in like big trash up or certain papers, certain.
They're only paying for that now. They're only paying for seventy dollars a night, we're not paying for that. We're paying.
But what I'm saying is, the deputies that we're hiring is for a whole year, so when this is not happening and they're, you know, when the school pays all three days and shuts down, unless there's something going on.
They sit up there after I got the break on the holidays.
Right.
If it's like a E learning day or.
Cause they got them two weeks.
Something like that, or they're out for snow day or something, they're still gonna be working.
Right. Just gonna be working, but like for the two weeks, the, the school shuts down for Christmas.
Yeah.
And all those long periods of time, they'll have something to do.
Yeah, but we, we can't keep each one of them in two beds, you know, the old for the school, and then when they kind of the town get in a new one, we got, you know, that's.
A new vehicle will actually go on the road to the patrol deputies that are working the road every single day. Well, then them S R O guys, once, if we get new vehicles for the road, then they'll get, say, this, like the fifteen Tahos right there, that'd probably be something to go with S R Os, be the first ones to go, cause that'd be the oldest ones we have. And then any other time we get new vehicles, then the next one we want to go possess.
They don't handle that.
Yeah. The, the next one to go possess S R O, then them couple could be spares, and that we, you know, we call the older ones kind of work out.
So, so back to that, that, so, so where you're looking at right now, the, the three vehicles. What do y'all think about using the money that's in this guy to go forth and buy three vehicles from the sheriff's department, like a hundred fifty thousand, that money, you go forth and buy? Vehicles at four hundred. Yes. Buy four vehicles for some of that money? Three, three for sheriff and one for lady. So anyway, you might buy a vehicle, this is to me, it's gonna be used that money, and then just take it from general fund, says we got.
I understand that, I mean, we have to use it when the sheriff's department, we should be able to use it when the road department, of course, you can.
I think, I think less than a hundred we could use it, I think, in my place.
We can talk about it.
Yeah, we're technically not one deputy now, cause one per deputy went to S R O, so that's only one vehicle, but we're lucky to keep this vehicle for this, uh, this. Right. I mean, his has got two hundred twenty-two thousand dollars right now.
So which vehicle is he going to?
Well, them two, well, we got two, so they're kind of gonna have to rotate out. Uh, more than likely, he's gonna go to Frick Hertz, the new guy, the slimy guy's gonna go to Hollis. And they're just gonna have to rotate out the, the train.
That's good. And then that's pretty much what, uh, talking with Mr. Young, when he, they, they said there's deputies, whatever you got, you want some attempt to the school.
Yeah.
And you go out, maybe one go out on a Tuesday, one go out on Thursday, this is the train.
Yeah. And just have a day or something.
And one of the suggestions, if we wanna suggest, they have a line out in the school for safety. When that deputy goes out there, if you look.
Yeah, I need to get that gate up, or if we can't get in.
Up, up there, if, if you look at that, I went up there, cut right away out there, coming to that fur, but the gate that they have right there now is done closed, but it needs to be at least sixty feet. In, pretty good ways in, the other one just open when you drive out, but if you pull up at the other side, that would probably be the best money spent on that train speed, so if people just can't pull out, circle around, they got to be, they either have a push button.
Or a man or something.
Or, or. Further or older, then there's no way you.
But they, they got a lot out there for, for that, for safety doors, locks, all kinds of stuff for the school, and that should would be money well spent. And they're gonna be, most be taken, and if y'all make any suggestions to the school, the commission would like to be copying on that. So I would like to meet out there with the day, it'd be our list, maybe you go there and see what we think, and if they got that money to spend on that.
Secure their areas.
Right. So y'all wanna talk about the vehicle there? Oh, I know, I mean.
You don't have to purchase the lead.
Do you need to start making a resolution?
Now, I know we're gonna turn it up. I know we had one that we could put on order already, you know, and I took it out of the budget until it gets ready, I guess.
Right.
And it, it's supposed to be ready in maybe another month or two, maybe.
Well, and that's where I'm going with this. We don't, it's like, tell us, Lee, you gotta get in line.
I can get in line. If, if you're gonna do mine, mine's January. I've got pretty much.
Now, I think, I think also, those chips are supposed to be rolling in, right? So the pricing vehicles might probably, there's a lot of vehicles set up.
I think I'm reading the middle of the summer, we got a bit more vehicles than they would say, but that's the middle of the summer, and that's just. You're about to be.
Here would be, here would be my, right beside you, right? Yeah, we're working on these businesses.
Right. Yeah, we don't know if they're bid vehicles or not, but.
Alright, you, you wanna at least start putting something together so that we can vote on it?
Right. I, I think, I think we gotta get in the circle. I think we gotta go after these people dealing with that, right, and all of our cabinet, they got like seventeen, twenty meters sitting out there. Just setting them, and so, and they have the money to do that, but we gotta be in place, have a.
I think we're gonna reach out to Jefferson County, cause they're the same way. I think we might try to reach out to them, say if they got any, like, good huge ones that they don't drive, and say we might could purchase a couple of them.
Well, that Tahoe that, uh, Jack got us that time, that he gave to, it was, it, it comes from Cabin County.
Yeah.
Uh, those are the probably the guys that we could reach out to. This guy's probably something that's, you know, they, they probably got theirs for their change amount as soon as they get to a certain point.
There's no use to before, often didn't, so I know like, like Cooper, they're gonna take theirs out like every six, about miles.
I'll tell you something else too, and we got plenty of room to store it, over a lot of times, if you, if you'll start, and we've talked with Dennis about this a couple of times. Uh, we can get surplus equipment, roll in, and once you keep it one year, you knock it in out, and you say, I'll make this happen, and y'all knock it in out, the money goes to the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Uh, see, he's got three, four pieces of equipment doing that.
Well, we've talked about getting back in that.
And, and, and we.
The ten thirty-three program.
Yeah, and, cause we got, uh, we got two or three things, we got C D L licenses, we can go pick it up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the mayor said, if we ever got anything, these picked up, vehicle picked up.
I think where they got, weren't, one time, accidentally like, class A military uniform. I think it kind of tipped them off.
Yeah.
So they didn't, they didn't.
Well, that, they got that doctor, they got a tractor trailer with a load boy on it. I think they only give, which so they didn't have anything to haul on, but then they turned around and sold it. It's somewhere in the lot, and they turned around and sold it for ten, fifteen thousand dollars a lane.
Well, not yet.
That, uh, that doctor that they got over there, uh, you know, it just sat on a military yard and tracked a lot of new, but what happens is, is when stuff sets like that, the hoses and stuff needs to be repaired, but it's still, turned and sold, it's, but, you know, that's.
You wanna make any resolution?
I just, yes.
I want, you wanna add in a resolution, do you, and that resolution would be?
So you got one, what's that money, what does that money come from?
We took it out of this budget, as we say.
I thought y'all took it out of the, cause it was in there, I think y'all said we, y'all take it out and let it come in.
We agreed, put it back in, money come with you.
So technically, we need two more ones.
Two, and then, and then leads, that'd be three vehicles. That'll be four hundred, whatever it is.
We only got two thirty-seven.
You have already got two thirty-seven at the moment, of that four hundred and seventy-four thousand, it's kind of, is the L A T C F twenty thousand, which is by market, but that's still.
And you have to get, you have to get more over getting that?
Yes, get a resolution from the lady, right.
Okay. I'll do that from now, I see. So that's two Tahos and F two fifty. I'll have to have the specs and everything on those Tahos, even though they're all state midwest, so I do better do the F two fifty last month.
Once she gets that new business, we're gonna send her in.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, for what she's gonna have, she's gonna, she's gotta have quotes too, you gotta get quotes too, you can't just pull.
She was pulled off, so I'll have quotes, according to Kelly, in the I C.
Where did you get yours from? But the car needs to be, the quotes that they come out, it needs to have all of those initials on it.
Oh, this is the pursuit vehicle, picking the.
Well, I mean, your letter and then.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
There is gonna be several resolutions, there'll be one resolution for the F two fifty and one for the, the sheriff's department, because that's, that's gonna have to wait for the I C parts.
Alright, you got time to do that between now and? Okay. It's Jan, Jan, any business on those two resolutions?
New business.
Any business on up to this?
And on this, I got, was the letter that you brought up, one of them, our guys, like they do nowadays on those kids, they just, I don't, they don't even know yet. Uh, we just found out, like, you know, we sent last Thursday afternoon, went and found out by this morning, they want to turn it in by Thursday, I believe, so that's only a couple of days. Uh, the list won't know if we can extend it, maybe one week.
Take it out.
Yeah. But we hadn't had a letter, the, you know, the free options or whatever, they didn't, they didn't know what the free option was, that's just.
We just have to extend it out there.
I mean, that's, I mean, they just picked one today.
Obviously, as long, as long as she knows, and she knows before she has dropped a roll, then she'll, she should be afraid.
I just know, uh, I think, even I said that, we turned it on Thursday, this coming Thursday.
And I think you're wrong.
Yeah. But there's some of our guys, you know, we, it's gonna be tough getting in touch with women, getting to them, and I heard that once a kid, no, I think it's paycheck, paycheck, getting paid real range and.
I'll talk to everybody, and see what the hard data on you is, and get that put in, embarrassed.
He wouldn't want to see that.
Hey, uh, I got a look, you share some of the S R Os, is it five eight?
I think, yeah, it's five eight, but I can't remember the timeframe, it could be there for months, seven, I can't read yours, I don't know.
I hope that, uh, the, more of these cases just spent for seven and a half hours, so just, just like wasting.
Yeah, it's like seven to three is whatever. Sometimes the kids get off the bus, but not many get off the bus. So we hope, maybe I can figure that out once they get there, some of the time, maybe a little different, so.
They probably won't be there before the kids get there.
That's why, yeah.
Position, and then probably thirty minutes, but I believe they're gonna get there and be there.
Right, and that's why we told them this is just something, cause it's all youth, it's just still, you get there and figure it out.
What about your equipment, your bridge equipment for?
Until we have, we got uniforms, uh, and we're probably gonna have to rotate some of the tagers and body cams from like, some of that, but we don't, the position ain't filled, rotate them until we can get over.
You got any of your bodies tonight, that's something you got to pay for?
I'd have to go back with the Tahoe, there's nothing left.
The body cam, to maybe put a lot for.
Oh, it is.
Take some of that, like, and you, then have body cam yourself.
Yes, yes, too.
Cause that's, they need to have those body cams.
Or that's, like, fifteen thousand something.
Yeah.
Something like that, Tim?
Yes, sir.
With like fifteen thousand something.
I think so, yeah, so, I think that's not been all of it, but, but.
That's what it means.
And what they're gonna have to have, uh, body cams, tager, uh, they have.
We can work and figure out what, can supply three of them, on that is?
Yeah, okay.
Always spending money, we might as well just take it out of that, L A T C F money, so let's get a resolution for that.
Now, we're gonna have to spend for all of this, like, uh, one, if you're gonna, so.
You gotta replace it.
Yeah, so I think, say, we're gonna have to, unless you wanna go ahead and do it all at one time, because Scott may carry his stuff, you know, from the road to the school.
But then you don't have.
We'll have to replace his position.
So if a new deputy comes in, every deputy, y'all keep all the equipment?
Yes.
We just need to go back, back, we'll take that. Do you have an idea? I mean, as far as, are you looking at? Or can you?
Do you need a resolution?
Do we need, we wanna do a resolution if you can give her, to give her the amount that we can get out of the agenda, exactly?
We'll do that tomorrow.
Cause we got two weeks before the meeting.
We'll do that tomorrow.
Do y'all think one resolution will get one? They say it's just need to equip three officers, three S R O officers, everybody gonna work. I don't, I don't know if y'all saw anything, I didn't see any. Resolution.
Okay, put those all the best and, and vehicles all in one resolution, is it need to be separated?
Need, I'm just gonna put it on new business, okay?
Okay.
We'll have that, um, Terry made a, you know, mention other day, we're trying our best. Our work session, I have everything, so we don't have to add anything at the last minute. Of course, sometimes you can't help it. Anything else?
Going forward, uh, I spoke with Mark up in Atlanta, about those doors back in the bank, and, uh, he told me, so, I know the ma, I already knew the neighbors, but hey, those doors are, are basic standard metal, all the core gold.
What's what? Didn't you find that out the hour?
But anyway.
Yeah, they're hollowing it, but.
Right, and I talked with them, and, and, and they can fix these brand new doors, only thing I gotta look at, but I think when we looked at them, Lane, it, it was the T stripe, but just like a regular metal bolt. And it's been modified to put some slats in there. You know.
We had three.
Every, every morning you break your shoulder, you probably couldn't get it out, but you could.
Well, I think they beat it open last night.
Yeah, so one of those doors, the screws was out, so friends come up this morning and put those screws in. And, uh, but, but one thing that we did is just when we're looking at it, we need.
All the doors bowed down, like the shit.
Order, order the, uh, put those door closures on the outside. Uh, and I'm telling you, it's eighty percent easier, man, it's supposed to have things on the outside than the inside. I just cannot believe that the door closures are on the inside, and how they've even lasted this long. But anyway, he was telling me from about nine hundred to a thousand dollars a piece, they will make the door, hinge the door, and, you know, send it, and do it, or whatever, just have to load them and bring them back. So what I was gonna do, if there's one of the doors that, that's the one that's bowed, we can take it off, I'm just gonna take it with me, I told him, I said, just rather for him to put his fingers on it back in their shop. And say, this is what we want, we'll make sure that this is what we get. And then that won't be no guesswork on, on how, he just needs to be done, cause I think most of them was like four or five, right? Left hand, and then, uh, just about two, right hand doors, if I remember. But anyway, uh, but, uh, I'll get, uh, the credit application and get, uh, one of the ladies to fill that out. And it's John, not the horse, it's John, not the hardware, and, uh, they said they got a shop in the back, but they didn't much.
Yeah, we have taken them off before, and tons of, out in California, but it's well, it's a bad, it's just so many times we rip off all the doors.
Well, those, yeah, when you, you probably, I think you took it up there and all the rig board, you'd be better off to buy a new door. I must say, try to just. Okay, so we'll work on that, and then, uh, we went over there, and then Brad and I met with, uh, Lane and them over there, and looked at the water situation. I didn't find any water coming from the leaky dude roof. Now, I did get up on the roof, and there's two places I think that needs attention before something happens. And most of all, that is, I don't understand, but you gotta use F P one, and, and some way or another, just this, take a big old can of spray paint and put your spray on front of the jail, do not put cough on that side of this building. And that there, and, and I, and I find, and I, but we still call them coughs, that same cheap stuff, you gotta put something that's got a ten year life on it, so, uh. So, uh, but, uh, now the water is running out, not running under the building, so that's a, I think that's, I think that's gonna create, no way with some of the dampness that's inside and shit. I don't know where all that water is going, or what's going.
Wasn't there some in your office, Kelly?
It was wet this morning.
Around the bottom?
Oh, well, I don't know, it is.
Yeah.
I think Patrick said he had some under it, it is.
I wish y'all would give me a holler, I'd like to come over and look at it.
That wasn't just standing, I mean, you could rub your hand across it, feel it.
And it's not like it's running from the edge of the wall, is it?
No, it's why.
It's running up the slab.
Yeah.
Well, see, the slab is bracken.
Yeah.
And, uh, and that's what we was trying to, and, and see, we still like three of those. Now, on the far side where the pods are, it's done correctly. You got a six inch pipe coming up, the duct goes down in it, it's gotta be a lake under there, I'm just telling you, it's gotta be a lake, because that's, I mean, that water's coming out of the pipes, and none of it was running out to the street, it's all going back towards the jail. So I don't know how to be in those.
That'd be way along.
Something different than what it was doing. Now, and, and Patrick's office, you know, we don't finish scraping that floor.
That's brown.
Huh?
That office, please.
Yeah, brown, okay, so we're gonna scrape that up, then at that point, I'm gonna pour two each hole through the slab, do a pour sample, and that way I can see how much concrete, and what I'm hoping is that there's plastic, at least plastic under the slab, and then I hit some red dirt, I hope I just don't go through there and also hear splash, so.
You might fill the whole building under the water when you go that hole.
Weird house.
Actually.
You know, I mean, it's.
It's very, something else, I could say. Where they at?
Our one of them's mine, one of them's jail, mine.
So that two are not on this list?
Uh, one of them is.
One of them is.
Yeah, another two are not on this.
Well, that's it.
That's not nothing, yeah.
For this one, jail, this is all, this sheriff's office vehicles, controls, but then we didn't add none of the jails.
Terry benefits, figure, on that.
I mean, this is jail, huh?
Got, uh.
Got a vein in time.
And a transport, and then Terry, or.
I just have to see this, and I know, just had bought a couple of them.
Yeah, with the jail, there's always a lot, our free equals, of the officer, too.
All right, looking at what you've got, somebody else show me?
No.
Okay, any other questions for John? Yes, sir.
I'm about to leave. Looking in progress.
Well, we ain't had nobody there, and he's been at work, so.
It is a field, too, but.
I got somebody to go out with them, anybody.
I just thought I missed the bill, anyway.
Yeah, well, it's my dad who got out, somebody to go out with them, yeah.
But you mentioned, and you mentioned that S R O officers might have chance some of their days off.
If they're off, yeah.
Kind of stick more forward.
When you had a whole lot going on, they might tell a couple of how you which if you can, like, some of the crap.
You're on the road all the time, you know how it is.
Oh, I know, I go down like dirt road.
And you clean up the spot, and people come out, ooh, clean spot.
I pick beer bottles out of my yard every day.
Which would be case.
Or cans or whatever.
Wouldn't do that, you'd be comfortable.
Hey, we're doing that with them, my business down there, and I thought about, we're out there picking up those, I thought, I thought, I think, I think we were trying to bring the sack. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, you didn't get that calling, sorry.
Well, when you're not in a beer, coke can, or beer bottle, you get them back, you get them.
I tried, I tried.
I figure it's gonna be some tough alcoholics from out there, but I'm telling you, boy, ninety-nine percent of the trash we get is not only beer bottles, beer cans, but I thought that these people are throwing out whole fill, fifty-five Jack Daniels, and, I just say, say.
Does anybody have any ideas about the litter, how we can get someone to pick that, or do it ourselves?
Where you at with Terry, what are we gonna put his, Terry gonna?
I haven't talked with him, I guess, you know, I haven't, yeah, I haven't seen him, so.
So, let me ask this, is there, if you had, if you fill that position, I'm meeting with,
I bet you still haven't taken it, because.
I meet with, uh, with David and you, Lane, uh, and, uh, David Howell is, and I told him, I says, that the commission is looking at probably hiring a company to pick up trash on the side of the road. Well, then, there's not gonna be a Mr. B, if we have to do that, or whoever's gonna take Mr. B's place. So at the same time, I went and talked with David Howell, and David said, well, let's all get together, that the school would be willing, he would go back to pay a portion of that salary, and, and he, and he'd like to see it full time. And, uh, so I would like to get everybody on board that uses that service, that, uh, you know, I mean, it's okay to go out and ramble out there and, and work there too, and, uh, and go here and go there, but, you know, I think it's gotta come to a situation to people contributing to the college.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's, uh, that's what we're gonna do, but I, I've run into David Webb this morning, reminded, he said, any day of today, and I told him, probably Tuesday next week, but, uh, the school would be willing, if they would be willing to match some of the funds for that, because they get a big benefit out of it.
Yeah, they're, they're planning, and school's out.
Oh, they push all of us, and all our students notice, and you have to get seven, you're only paying for half one, or a third of one, but I think, we just need to get everybody to, to contribute to that, so I just, I forgot, the commission, I was gonna need with them to discuss what we feel like their share would be, and they might will say, and then we'll just forget about it, and then we'll just go forward hiring somebody to, uh, pick up trash on the side of the road. I mean, I, I mean, that's an option, that's something I think, y'all like that option. You got another one, don't listen to it.
Well, I hate to put you on the spot, but I tell all the time, but that, we don't have you, I know.
We have to, we're working part time, we don't work probably one day a week, so, I mean, in my, there for a few months, I don't even work, or, you know, if that's officer a month at a time.
But I think, I think what, I think what, uh, Roger. Yeah. I think what Roger was saying, was, and, and talking with, uh, David, cause he said, oh, I, cause the guy had talked with, if you're jealous, to talk to David about it, he'd like to do that job, so, uh, you know, or put when he comes where he could, you know, get it full time.
Yeah, that's why they were got one in mind, just.
Yeah, so, uh, maybe, I think that's the biggest thing, and I would, I didn't remember the name, so I, I told David, I said, well, that's probably that guy's name.
Same.
Same, I said, he said same, so, so we good, so. We, you know, we'd like to see Mr. B stay full time, Mr. B's never lost a camp, yes, we need somebody to make it our full time, and I think we also need specified Mr. Shand, that the county commission is, is paying a portion of the salary, and we're going with some trash that goes on the road, making it right for us.
And this, this is off the record, that, that log trailer is, is parked again, on the edge of, or.
Well, we sit on down there, look, it's off the, it's off the road, it's not a road hazard, they checked it, and everything's, comes back clean on the trailer.
Or off the black.
On our side of the aspect, that, that's not a road hazard, because it's off the roadway. It'd have to be parked on the road before it could be a, a road hazard. If we towed it, then they gonna come back, sue us for towing it.
I'm saying about towing it.
So as long as they didn't lock the trail, or.
As long as it's not beating the, the flow of traffic, then we can't really do nothing about it. It's like if there's one part of your driveway, we can't even tow it, it's up the line, owner to tow it then.
Yeah.
It has to be actually on the roadway before we can tow it. And there's sometimes, if it's borderline, we'll tell the guy, say, you better take a picture of it, showing, well, sometimes the vehicle, the tires are actually off the roadway, where they got a caddy corner, the bumper maybe sticking out, you know, just a little bit, well, technically, they say it's off the roadway.
I'll get in my truck time.
Send me a lot of park on it.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
I think, I, I think I'm gonna go to the jail, that y'all don't have to go, but I was gonna go since I hear all this rain, just to see, I, I have the same order, other than around right at the front.
Yeah.
Slaring corner at five thirty, it's a forecast.
All the land, I would like to, to be top, about, about two hundred thousand aside, and to the court fee to establish, to build the township.
Is that a resolution you like to put?
Yeah, it's a resolution I'd like to put on the table.
Two hundred thousand, and it'll be coming from?
The court fee.
Court fee, which is going to general fund? Okay, so there's a resolution there? Concern or new business? New business? The, uh, I talked to Jason, but no, he said he never been to church with him.
I talked to him up here, I mean, when, I mean, I've seen him, but they've got, uh, they've almost got, I think they were sending their paperwork back to tomorrow, and she said it would take two weeks for them to see it.
Yeah, I don't care about the battle, I'm gonna see, I don't know, I would like to.
It's our liability, be no different than when we leased the fire, the Abernathy Fire Department, because that's what I, I mean, he'll talk about it, but I'll, I'll call Jason tomorrow and let him talk to the commission, but when we lease the fire department, that building over there, we can't tell the same other, same thing, then, our buildings that we have always got.
But there is a law, it's based on, I don't know, the D S, well, it wouldn't, on that one.
I, I still, I mean, I mean, this is a good.
I'm saying, once you, once you open a camp order and say, we've got a dollar, then what is our liability under state law?
Well, I, we either take action, or we're ready to take action, because people can come together and say, look, I'm a law, you're supposed to have a show, I'm a law, you have funds there.
At that point, at that point, shelter is a, a family.
Yeah, this is.
Shelter is.
And this is where at, y'all, you have the authority to ask, or we don't ask a resolution, and then we can go on with it as a commission. And new, new business, two hundred thousand out of general fund, or court fee still, I'm telling you. All right, anything else, any other resolutions you want to add?
The only other question I have, I know that when we started the, um, where people were working from home, we did that during the COVID, do, are we still doing that, where our employees are working from home and we're being charged for it?
Not supposed to be in my office.
That's what, I, I just want to make sure that we're not still doing.
You got, or is anything you're referring?
If we still, are we still doing that?
Is that resolution up to time now, or? I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember anything. I don't, yeah, I don't either.
Well, I would go in and ask your H R person tomorrow, to, to find out how it works for, she's way along.
Start, start.
What is paid for?
Starting at the top, nine one one, yes, sir.
I got one, uh, we need to, at some point, discuss that building house up there.
Yeah, do you want a resolution? Do you want a resolution, just put it up for sale?
I mean, we need to have someplace else, no?
Well, I mean.
I can't, we, somebody told me the name of that church across the street that.
New Hopewell, that was church.
What about, can we say another shoes there, but we could.
Do you want me to work on that?
That's what I'm telling you, just, yeah, you know, I mean, I don't know anybody out there.
I mean, I can get on that, I can get on that and work on that, if y'all, if y'all.
Yeah. Why don't you do that, because I'm getting phone calls, and.
Yeah, and that.
It's two years of getting something set up.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, that, he, he, he's calling, somebody's calling about, but I think he, I think we have to alternate off, but I think he would probably get away with it.
I think that does.
Yeah.
But, unless, once you.
Let me, let me see if we can get an alternate place.
Okay.
The other, the other thing, and that's, not everybody's gonna like that, because that, my daddy, my granddaddy go there, they don't, I, I've heard that before, because I looked into moving that one, and Holbert made it clear to me, rolled over, and Holbert was a law out there then.
Well, see, Holbert told me that him and three more gentlemen actually controlled that building, and I never saw a paperwork or nothing like that, but all four of those gentlemen are passed away now.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think so, I think that was just, it's kind of like our territory down there, but, but, you know, you get, when I, I consolidate, I say, I, the commission, but I worked on that, you know, when I first came into office, we moved Cavenders, you know, Cavenders, we moved, uh, Bud Blakes, which is way out there at ten, we moved that to Mikeville Fire Department, and I talked heck about it, but it was the best thing to do. Um, we also have consolidated a few others, too. So, I'm trying to think, oh, yeah, Grace Chapel, we moved, there was one that, back there, um, what do you call that?
Beaston Mill.
Beaston Mill, yeah, we moved Beaston Mill to Grace Chapel, so we have, we've moved quite a few, consolidated, just made.
The first money just been spent on so far, and the first money that they've spent on for a hauler, we could pay a hundred dollars for maybe a ton.
Well, I worked on, I worked on Hopewell, but the, what's the other opportunity, what's your, what's your thoughts on that, uh, on, on the, the fire, the other fire station I said, no, you, was that ever considered, or is that just too far out?
They got issues.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're about this far, if you're gonna throw it out of subterfuge, I don't think, so I wouldn't want to do it.
Well, they probably got no best chiefs or anything.
That's a problem, there's one problem, that's why.
I'll be in some. I'm sorry, I just, I just want to leave best work, yes.
I get more phone calls with our, our station, and I do real lot of things.
All right, I, I'll take on, I'll.
Okay, I got one more tonight.
All right.
Okay, we have overspent our three hundred thousand we sat aside on that ARPA money, so we need to, we need to figure out what are that money, these we take from the balance out of that.
And I suggest that we take it from the money that we just received.
Yeah, I, I want to probably let it be, was that the same time she said?
So, what's the resolution?
Uh, it's simple.
How's the resolution, you got, can we do that? Can we take it from this money and put it in that money? Can we take that L A T C F money, transfer it to.
Can't really transfer that money, we have to get it, a resolution again from the I A C, do this, like, twenty-four thousand, so it can make up the difference in that. Um, I'm thinking, we'll have to read that.
You gonna have to, you gonna have to say it's for something, we can't just move it.
Yeah, can't just move it.
That's got more, so I just.
Right, and it's also the last resolution we have till December, so we may have to, um, we may have to amend that resolution from last night, for the loan or the ARPA money to pay all of it, except for the twenty-four thousand, and then the L A T C F money, to pay for the other portion of it. It's semantics, it's the same thing, it was just a matter of getting the resolutions right, so that doesn't have a problem, with what we spent our money on.
So is that any of your resolution, right?
I'm taking the river, but I, I wish that's an invoice we do, being a couple of weeks.
So that resolution, can you make that out, and you put that on, new business?
I thought we complicated something, I don't think we complicated.
What, that's fine.
Why don't we just take the twenty-four thousand and the rest of the ARPA funds that we got, which is actually, when you mean it, and this reverse does, at some point, with that, this L A T C F, that'd be the easiest way to do it.
It'd be easier to keep this confirmed, I mean, that resolution from last night.
And it, it's something that's not gonna be getting, you know, out, if you're looking at, because they're like, that's a hell of a decision.
So that resolution, the, what, take it out, L A?
What we're gonna do is take the twenty-four thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars, fifty-four cents, I.
What we're gonna do is take the twenty-four thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-four cents out of District Two, District Three departments here.
Because that's, that's only one of the layers that have been so sad.
But actually, Rogers has not been spent yet, I don't think, has it? Is thirty-five in process to be moved, you gonna do thirty-five?
Thirty-five, it's not, it's not the one that.
Oh, okay, three, three is.
Three would be out and come back, you know, but it's around that, it's gonna be sick.
Well, that's fine, if, if them are all with it, we can just take out a, here's a math, twelve thousand something dollars, and then we'll just get reimbursed somewhere down there.
Alright, so you make that, you make that a resolution, right?
At least they'll provide us one of these every month too, coming forward.
Can we put that in business, or send it?
Yeah.
Consignor? Agenda. That's three hundred K.
I think we asked them to, to, uh, start providing us again with comp time, to use, uh, that, we should give those, and we've not been given.
Is that something you would need?
That's something I probably have to do. And just because I haven't seen what type of compensatory absence report that you've ever received, and not having it there forever, I assume that what you wanna know is. How many individual, uh, other ones? Individual employees and how much comp time they have accrued.
Police of Mikevich.
Either of us can, can get access to it.
I think, I think if you're looking for time, comp time, I think you need to get to the one that's not weird, the one in there.
But I mean, maybe just wanted to call us and.
Yeah.
And I do, I think you got, we do keep a spreadsheet that keeps up the compensated absence and what's been taken. We keep up with that, that's one of the jobs that I'm impressed enough to do, because it's a simple amount, whether, of matter of honor or highlight of what's been taken, and it's a spreadsheet, I have to keep up with that part.
And I think that it, once it did come to Liza, and then all that's tied together, we just went from one department to the other.
I like to come from it, but at the time, Ken was fighting with her, you know, most time it was him and, uh, the man.
Did we not carry something over last month's meeting to this month?
There was something on the business. Y'all remember what that was, the one business we didn't have? Y'all remember what that was?
I'm trying to think, well, we didn't, really, we didn't do anything about the red information, called composition.
Okay.
We didn't, we bought it, uh, yeah, oh, in a, uh, freely.
At Z was a building, wasn't it?
It was a building, back there.
It got carried over. We're just gonna try to figure out where that was, the nine one one, me, right, B M A.
That's a new one, she says she live with that, I live with that.
That's exactly what I was thinking, when, as we get there a while ago, just, y'all can vote it, if we get that business, we can, y'all can vote it down then.
What's your one, one, like, light?
My light tower, for a rainbow, because now they're walking around.
Okay, with the red light tower.
And she's wanting to give you the red one, that don't work.
Right.
Which I think I often go out there and cook, and want to just get one on.
So, yeah, but, uh, I don't know, but, but the red one, it, the lights burn out on it a while, way a while back. And then, uh, I got with, uh, the guy that works on all of her generators and stuff, he said, he told me to go by and get some LED lights, that you don't have to have all those transformers on it. It's on those, on those lights, and if you, and, and I, when we cut the wires loose and everything, cause, called them fire, so we started calling that loose, so we could use it for, only, the thing we used for hams, like for, building something, or pulling the commercial generator apart.
Well, if it worked fixing that one, or?
They, they were, were fixing, fixing it, just, uh, you know, somebody getting the lights and, and, and wire those, wire those four.
So the one, the generator fine.
Yeah, I put a new fan, I put a new fan belt on it, fixed the line, it charges and everything great, and then, and it's, uh.
So the transformers are lights, it's what's happening.
Yeah, and what, and what it did is, there's plenty of wire, cause I pulled enough wire, and then, I was gonna go ahead and look at, and I talked to Crystal about buying the lights, and you can go down there, uh, home before most carries, but you might get them, or creditize his lights, but him, and buy four lights to go on those LED, see what those, all those up there now, got those big heavy bulbs, those LED, I was gonna think, come on, they pop on, but, but it was on right straight off the generator, neither.
If it's something, my question to the commission is, is it something? Nine one one needs to pay for it?
Then, E M A to pay for it.
E M A.
Those are all E M A through us, got them all this season. But, but all of, all of them runs, they work, I, I, I go, I go, I go, I watch them, they go out there and run them for ten minutes. And, uh, you know, they really didn't need, I would, because now they're getting black again, I took it, two days to turn this stuff off the lights.
Yeah, but, but, the one that gets taken out there would be still, it's, uh, they had lights on our fire trucks, and those lights have gone out. So now he's going, one of those, which, one of them's mine anyway, and we go out and buy a new one.
But I just pulled up resolution, go, yeah, they're gonna get one, they said that's one, four, seven, so, you put, put it in the saddle, it might mean that.
Starting at the top, let's look, see what we got. We got a nine one one resolution on a charter, a resolution charter, right? Y'all have to do that.
That's a nine one one?
Yeah, nine one one. Alright, moving on to our regular consignor, the three hundred K resolution was for what?
Probably the resolution for that bridge one generation.
For each? Then what you got?
We got the twenty-four thousand for, in it, to cover the deficit of about a hundred thousand more.
Okay.
Projects.
Consignor, do you?
Temporary.
Alright.
And then, that's it on consignor.
New business?
Got L A T C F resolution for two condos for Sheriff's Department. And L A T C F for the F two fifty, which I already got that resolution, so that'll be easy.
Okay.
Um, and L A T C F for equipment for four officers, tasers, body cams, et cetera, that I'm gonna get from John. And then, two hundred thousand for court fees going to general fund or animal shelter.
Okay. Terry's gonna look at the M O U situation, I don't look at that company, with the church about moving, possibly moving the, uh, voting house.
Miss Cobb's resolution on that, I mean, we need to nail it down, somebody, we keep this like we give them two hundred thousand dollars.
We're not keeping the two hundred thousand.
Well, that's one thing, we need to put in a resolution for something.
The two hundred thousand is to build the shelter.
To construct a building.
This is the construction of the building, which will be held through us. The lease, the lease will have to be written up by our.
Where you put the building, I mean, we need, we need all that in resolution.
The building will put out a God jail on one that we already own.
Okay. Anything else, y'all want to add? Just wanna make sure we got everything covered, y'all see anything coming up?
And I do want us to start looking, and I, and I need to bring it tonight, but I wasn't able to go back out of the house, so I'll wait until the next month, and I'll, even as I work on. Before we have sent it to the reservoir on the mobile home restrictions, and, um, I would like for us to, um, pull that back, review it, and move forward to be, as put in, um, some regulation on our mobile homes, though by the way, that we had sent to, one government to be passed. I didn't bring it, so I didn't put that out, so I'll wait for next month, and, and if I will pull those out and review it. It's the same one, it's the one that we sent to one government to have passed, and they declined it, and told us that we needed to pass the, um, so landing in general.
Nevermind.
So, which we did, now we need to, you know, start trying to put in place some regulations, because that's, you know, people are looking for us to do that.
I think Jason, I spoke with Jason about that, he said there's quite a bit of work that's gotta be done before we can start actually doing that. So maybe we just need to pass him to start that.
But now, you know, we, we voted, this is what I guess I'm more confused about, because we voted to send it to one government, to put it on the ballot to pass, so if we did that, everything should have been in order before we ever did that.
We didn't send down there to put it on the ballot, we put, we sent down there for the legislature to just pass it. And, um, your answer I got from, from Price was, that his attorney said, everything we wanted was already in, about a lot.
But anything you establish from here on out, using that stuff, of course, you gonna have to have a public here. And specifically, this is what we're trying to do, you have to have a public.
Back in the day, when I played county, I mean, I go to county, we've got a work for a body trailer park. Over there, what they did was, is they limited what model trailer could be set up on the property, and they also had to be a minimum of five acres. And I tell you what, that almost explained, really slowed it down now, and then you got, uh, probably where you got trailer parks, then, then you gotta put, then you put a covenant together for what you're gonna allow in there, and how it's.
That was, I remember what we sent down there.
We covered all of that, and that, well, I'm asking for you all to go back and pull it, you know, you have a copy, it shouldn't have a copy of it. And review it, and if something else needs to be added, something needs to be taken out, or how do you feel comfortable, but we need to start moving forward. And if the people voted for it, it's not just that, it's also, uh, also, you know, there's, I'll have all this, our next move that they're looking at, there's some laws that, as far as animal control, uh, the city of Hickman has it, and it gives the law, at least, when they, they can't go out there and just give that dog, they can't go out there and tell that person, you gotta keep that dog on, on your property, because they don't have any of that.
Who, who is gonna do that?
Does what?
Who is gonna do that?
Well, I, if the law is, if a neighbor calls and says, you're, they've got this dog on their property, and they get them all the time, they get calls like that all the time.
Are you gonna go pick up the dog?
It's not picking them up, it's that.
Yeah, they won't control it.
That, that, no, that person that that dog belongs to is in violation. If we have that law there, they're in violation, they get fined, if they don't keep their dog on their property.
But I think if, if I'm not mistaken, if they don't abide by it, I think we have to pick it up then, if that's why, if this is in place, I think we have to take possession of the dog then, and take it to a shelter, pound, or whatever.
So they go back, what kind of liability?
Yeah.
Does county take, uh, start this?
But anyway, just, they're looking at, if it turns out to be a story, there is some state law and sort of, it's only, it's a sort of issue.
Do you manage one of the sewer issue?
Um, somebody's starting a sewer facility.
Does somebody start that?
No.
And we did that, we did that, uh, and we already established that, what was that, uh, spread there on the interstate? Uh, gas, gas?
You got it, for the, the situation for, um, the welcome center?
Talking about the welcome center, I'm talking about somebody that just feels that facility, we have, you know, we have, don't have anything really that it takes.
On one hand?
Like, somebody goes out to really, um, treat them, or anything.
Oh, that's gotta be one of the words, I read. So, yeah, just like a C, C and D.
Well, uh, when, uh, Joe, he was holding that one in the room.
Yeah, after that, we passed a resolution saying, every time from that point forward, have to come to the commission.
I don't think we would pass a resolution.
Okay, we just need to have a resolution.
I don't think we would pass, because we didn't have any of those, no.
Oh, yeah, but he.
We definitely could.
Hey, you know, what she talking about George Springer, there are state laws, and if he owns the property and he meets A games required.
And that's what he did, and he was within the bounds.
He didn't have to close that dam, it was law team.
He didn't have to come to us, because we didn't have any regulations.
I think there's a lot of, uh, chicken farm, a lot of stuff as well.
There are chicken farms, uh, picks for it too, if you start something like that, and you get red chickens.
I'm just telling you to look at it, because it's all, it's on the, it's on the market, it never came to us, because we didn't have anything in, in place.
You're right, you, yeah, on, on that particular thing, yeah, but now, C and D, landfill has, and, uh, yeah, yeah. Josh, I would, St. Clair had one fire, it's a mess over St. Clair.
I mean, I think that's understandable, Casey tough window. I think before we can start passing individual things, cause it's pretty good process, you gotta.
Yeah, you gotta go through a process, but we, you gotta start, you can't just say, okay, we like the law, we, we've got, the people voted for us to change, but we're not gonna do anything, we're just gonna sit back here.
We need to pass, Jason, with.
I agree, we need to start. And the first thing, we need to park it on the right of that.
Alright, well. Is that a resolution that y'all are tasking, and this time, are you, he's, probably need to tell you what, what.
If you're over here two weeks, now that we're gonna get that and, and set out the table, we'll have the same conversation in two weeks, you're messing up my children.
Children's sake, with this process, you don't cross all, please, not all paths, but if there was courts, we'll just talk about it. He didn't tell me that, so I don't know what the process is.
That's the reason we have him, is to make sure we follow the process, but, he can't follow the process if we don't put anything on it.
You have to have a process.
Yes, have a process to do it.
Uh, are we, are we finished, y'all?
Yes, sir.
Do y'all want a resolution?
Put it together, hold it.
Alright, we'll see y'all in two weeks. On Tuesday, on the seventeenth.